Good evening and welcome to Lowell zoning Board of Appeals Public Meeting for April 22, 2019. Point of notice, if you have a cellphone, please turn it off or place it on vibrate for decorum of the meeting. Also, if you wish to speak in favor or opposition, please approach the lecturn, sign in, state your name and address for the record. Moving into continued business, we have none under new business. We've granted taking ZB 2019-14 out of order. And I read into the record a variance at Loon Hill Development, 326 Cumberland Road, Section 5.1, 5.3.2. The applicant is seeking variance approval for a project at 326 Cumberland Road. The proposal is to construct a new single-family home in a traditional neighborhood, single-family TSF zoning district, and requires variance under Section 5.3.2 for minimum usable open space per dwelling unit under Section 5.1. Table of dimensional regulations for a minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum lot size, maximum height, maximum floor area ratio, and for any other relief required of Lowell zoning ordinance. For a matter of record, we are in receipt of a letter, April 22, from Attorney George Theodoro. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney George Theodoro, 133 Market Street, representing the applicant, Loon Hill Development. You have before you a request to withdraw the petition without prejudice. An issue came up on Thursday morning, and I had a meeting with Eric Slagel of DPD Friday morning with respect to the possible merger of lots on this property. That this lot could have possibly merged with an adjacent lot whose address is 99 Orleans Street. And as a result of that, there is the possibility that it does not exist as an independent, non-conforming lot. We discussed the issues, and research has to be done with respect to that. My client at this time has to overcome that hurdle in order to go forward with other matters. And there are other matters that have to be addressed. We had a neighborhood meeting last Monday night, and we spoke with a number of the neighbors here. I couldn't contact, didn't have contact information for all the neighbors. I did contact the neighborhood organization, and I let them know that we were withdrawing. I have spoken to a number of them and told them that we're withdrawing, and they understand what the significance of that is. And we'll be in contact with them in the event that we do the research and have the opinion that is favorable for us in confirming that with the Law Department to go forward. But as it stands at this juncture, we request that it be withdrawn without prejudice.
Well, thank you, Counsel, and I appreciate your communications and reaching out to the neighborhood groups. And then, as noted, speaking to the members of the public that came out tonight in reference to this petition. And as always, you're very professional. That being said, prior to the vote, for a matter of record, the alternate voting member tonight will be Mr. Mark Briere. Moving forward with the petition, may I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2019-14 for variance for Loon Hill Development at 326 Cumberland Road to withdraw without prejudice.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Perrin.
I accept a withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Callahan.
Withdrawal without prejudice.
Member McCarthy.
Accept withdrawal.
Member Briere.
Acceptance.
Member Jamina.
Accept withdrawals.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Have a good evening. Moving forward under new business, ZB 2019-12 for variance in Hamilton Canal LP, 193.1 and 239.1 Jackson Street, HCID Postles 8 and 9. Hamilton Canal District Form Base Code, the applicant is seeking variance approval at 193.1 and 239.1 Jackson Street, HCID Postles 8 and 9 for the construction of a 144,050 square foot mixed-use development that includes 118 residential units. The project requires variances from the Hamilton Canal Innovation District Form Base Code and any other relief required. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Kevin Broderick. My office is at 1201 Westford Street in Lowell. I'm here tonight representing Hamilton Canal LP regarding 139.1 and 239.1 Jackson Street. And I have members of the Hamilton Canal LP team, including Matt Marata, the architect. We're here requesting three variances related to moving the S2 build-to-line, which will align it with the S1 build-to-line in the same building. That will trigger two other, triggers the other two requests for basically to, for no street wall at W2, and also for a slight decrease in the parcel coverage from, minimum parcel coverage from 55 to 52 percent. The plan before you is the plan that was taken, taken up by the Hamilton Canal Innovative District Review Board. And it was looked at by the Development Services, Ms. McCall, Senior Planner. There were no comments on it. It's pretty straightforward, and we feel that granting it, the variance will not substantially be, be a substantial detriment to public good, nor will it nullify or substantially deviate from the intent or purpose of the ordinance. You're familiar with the project. I know we were here last August, so you know the, the level of detail and what's going on over there. So I have, if there's any questions, I have folks who can help out as well.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Appreciate that. That being said, moving forward to public hearing, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition. That portion of public hearing now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor. That portion of public hearing is now closed. Would you like to open it up to the board? Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't have any comments or concerns. It seems pretty straightforward, as Attorney Broderick said, so I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Phillip?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any comments. I think it's okay.
Thank you. Mark?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment on just how significant and much anticipated a project this is, whose success is vital to the renewal of that district. So I lend my support to your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions. But I'm a huge fan of the form-based zoning, and so I'm really glad to see this project going forward. Just expected to have no issues with the form-based zoning. But if you could just kind of explain the deviations with the reduction to 52 percent, and then the other two elements with the zero structure, or zero build-wall at the street level there. I'd just like to kind of see how the form-based zoning needs to be tweaked for this project.
Yes, absolutely. I'll turn it over to someone, Wizer.
Matt Marata, Icon Architecture. I actually worked on the Form Base Code when we developed it way back when. And unfortunately, sometimes you can get a little too particular in the Form Base Code. So essentially, what we're proposing is, the Form Base Code asks you to build out this portion of the site, which is adjacent to Appleton Mills. There's currently windows on that lot line there. So we're proposing to pull it back to give some light and air, as well as, so what happens when you pull this build-to-line back, you're affecting the W2 build-to-line, right? So as soon as you pull that to align straight across some parcel eight, that street wall disappears. And with that alignment, which you can see lines all the way down across, kind of keeping a consistent street wall, it reduces the buildable, the buildable footprint, which then kicks us into not, just barely missing the minimum. So we're asking for less square footage, not asking for more.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. That explained a lot. Thank you. I think that this makes a lot of sense, and the requests are, I think, only making the project fit better on the site. So it's an improvement in my eyes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Well, Counsel, we are well anticipated of this project. We appreciate bringing your professional team, as always, well-prepared. Any other comments or concerns by the board? May I have a motion?
All right. Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2019-12 for variance. I'm trying to phrase this correctly, Christine. So we're seeking a variance, but it's actually three parts that...
Three variances.
So it's actually three, three separate variances. It's a little...
Will require a three votes?
Get all this right.
I think we could do a bulk vote. Let me get you the exact, it's 10.38 parcel eight, oops, that's the last one, sorry. 10.38 parcel eight requesting to change the S2 build-to-line maximum from four feet to 54 feet. 10.38 parcel eight requesting to change the W2 minimum street wall percentage from 55 percent to 0 percent. And 10.38 parcel eight requesting to reduce the parcel coverage minimum from 55 percent to 52 percent.
Thank you. That is my motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Mr. Briere.
Thank you. Chairman Perrin?
I approve multiple variances.
Member Callahan?
Approve all variances.
Member McCarthy?
Approve multiple variances.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
Counselor, you've been approved.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Counselor. You're the same. Moving on to ZB 2019-13 for variance, Tekir Wagner Alkocor at 72 Raven Road, Section 4.3.5, 4 and 5.1. The applicant is seeking a variance approval to construct a deck attached to the side and rear of the existing single-family home located at 72 Raven Road. The parcel is a suburban, single-family SSF zoning district and requires a variance under Section 5.1. Table of dimensional regulations for minimum rear yard setbacks and under Section 4.3.5, 4 for setbacks from accessory buildings and any other relief required of the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good. I'm here representing Tekla and Wagner Alcoser, who moved into Lowell in November. And we are looking to build a deck on the back of their house. The proposed deck is within the 10-foot setback of the existing garage, which was built non-conforming to the setbacks from the back into the house, and also on the back of the lot, which has a 25-foot setback, excuse me, sorry, which is greater than most of the city, I believe, is under 20-foot setback. This has a 25-foot setback, and our deck is 21 feet from the property line.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? You have questions from the board?
We would like to just make the case that the existing garage is, the way it's situated next to the house, there's an existing set of stairs that are non-conforming to the garage on the side that you can see on the driveway side. And our deck, we're proposing to turn the corner and connect up with that existing set of stairs. And just because of the location of the garage, it is causing that to be 7'6" inside of the 10-foot setback.
Thank you, sir. At this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Would you like to open up to the board? Phillip?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions. I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Phillip. Mark?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions about the deck itself. And we have a site plan which shows contours. And so it seems that the lot slopes down quite a bit from the front to back.
It does towards, so on the very back property line, there's kind of a row of arborvitae, and it, and it kind of tapers down and then drops down to those.
Right. So the finished floor of the house is probably going to be not far from the elevation of the deck. Is that your expectation?
It'll be one step down.
One step down?
Yeah.
And it looks like it's about three steps up from the grade at the front of the house to the finished floor? Maybe three or four steps?
Yeah, I think it's four, four steps.
Yep. So that puts the deck pretty far up in the back. Do you have any idea what that height is?
Yeah, it's going to be about 3 1/2 feet, I believe.
Hmm.
Three, three feet. Yeah, it's about four steps up, I think, four or five.
Okay. It's somewhere between 3 and 4 feet, I think, right?
Yeah. I imagine it'd be about that high.
Okay. And then you're going to have a railing above that?
Correct.
And so is there any intent to do trellis or a roof on it or structure?
On the, on which side?
On the deck?
Yes, yes, there is a trellis, actually a lattice on the bottom.
Okay. But there won't be anything, I'm just thinking, we're given...
High-wise, no, there's no trellis. Yes. I understand what you're saying. Yeah.
Great. I don't see it as a lot of relief that you're asking for, and I like the idea of a deck that makes sense. If you're going to build one, that it functions, and I think you're right about the dimension. I was just looking at the grading, thinking of it, and just making sure that it doesn't impact the rear yard setback more than it has to.
Right. Yeah, so it's kind of, it's almost enclosed on the two sides because you have the garage right there, and then on the back, you have like, they've got to be 25-foot-high arborvitae that separate.
Yep.
So...
I was hoping you could just explain that stair access one more time. Are you changing the size of the deck based on the stair location, or?
Yeah, so the portion of the deck that goes towards the garage turns the corner, and the plan is to tie it in with the existing side stairs that go into the kitchen. So that way, you'll be able to access from the driveway, you'll be able to go on to the deck from the driveway.
So you're going to extend the deck towards the front of the house, but that's not in the setback issue? You're just making the deck a little bit larger?
Right.
Got it. Okay. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, Sean, I don't think you mentioned what your name is or where you're from at the outset. I just want to, just for the record, so that the...
I'm Lawrence Howell from Platt Builders.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Out of Groton, Massachusetts.
All right. Appreciate it. Thanks. Yeah, I don't, I don't really see there's many issues with this. It's, the relief, I think, is minimal. The deck, there's no, there's no plans to connect, or put any stairways from the deck back end of the deck connected to the garage, correct? It's just basically wrap it around and be done with that, right? Okay. Sure. Other than that, yeah, I really, I don't think there's much, there's minimal relief being requested. I don't think it's much of a real issue, and I wish you the best of luck. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Any other comments? That being said, may I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2019-13 for variance for 72 Raven Road to construct a deck within the rear yard setback of variance of 4 feet.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approved.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member...
Approved.
Sir, you've been approved. We wish you the best of luck with your build and hope you enjoy your deck for the summer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Have a good night.
Take care. Moving on under new business, ZB 2019-15 for variance, DSM Realty Inc., 277 and 705 Petucket Boulevard, Section 61.10. The applicant is seeking variance approval under Section 6.1.10 for relief from the maximum curb cut requirement and any other relief required of the Lowell zoning ordinance. The applicant is proposing to construct an approximate 7500 square foot market basket supermarket and 12,000 square foot of retail space at 677 Petucket Boulevard. It includes reconstruction of the 134 space parking lot of the existing restaurant at 705 Petucket Boulevard. Site is located in suburban mixed-use SMU zoning district. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Attorney Greg Curtis. I'm at 144 Merrimack Street in Lowell. And I'm before you tonight with regard to DSM Demola Supermarkets and DSM Realty with regard to seeking a variance for table dimensional requirements for curb cuts. We have been working with the different departments through all of last year, and we were approved through the Planning Board, Conservation, and had a peer review. We've been working with DPD, and we've come up with a final plan that shows what the changes in the curbing will be. It was submitted, and I think there were some comments from the, from the department regarding what we're planning to do. So this is a rehab of the entire area out there at the parking area where JJ Boomer's is in the front, and the back was the drive-in. So essentially, in the reconfiguration, we're eliminating a large stretch of open curb cut that was part of the parking lot at JJ Boomer's. And I think you have maybe a copy of the plan in front of you. That area is going to be closed in as, along with the existing curb cut, which is behind the JJ Boomer's restaurant, which is very close to the intersection of Petucket Boulevard and Old Ferry Road. In developing the new project, we have a right turn in, if you're traveling westbound on Petucket Boulevard, into the area that can then access the JJ Boomer's parking lot. And also at that location, there would be a right turn exiting the development, which would then again bring you on to Petucket Boulevard going westbound. Further down, closer to the existing JJ Boomer's restaurant, there will be a curb cut for an exit, again, right turn only, exiting onto Route, that's Route 113 to Petucket Boulevard, heading westbound. Moving further over to Old Ferry Road, as you go further up Old Ferry Road, the first entranceway requiring a curb cut is an area that's one of the main entrances to the shopping center. And that is a 30-foot-wide roadway. I think the curb cut there is at the lot line, I think it's about 68 feet. So that will be one of the main entrances for the curb cut to allow traffic to flow. And traffic flowing from there can flow either right, going north on Old Ferry, or left on Old Ferry. Further up, closer to the proposed supermarket, the main entrance, which is 36-foot wide roadway, because we take into consideration the 6 feet of no parking zone for the fire lane, that is, I'm told, a 66-foot curb cut. And at that location, just a little further north on Old Ferry, will be a crosswalk, which has a solar flashing LED light. So when people do want to come down or they want to cross, they can, they can hit that button, and the LED beacon will go off to hopefully allow them to cross. A little further up, we have the entrance to the rear of the market or the building, showing where truck travel will be, and most of the deliveries will come in through that area. Trucks will come up. Petucket Boulevard, take a right onto Old Ferry, travel up Old Ferry, take a right into, into the entrance, which is the rear of the delivery area. That again is a 30-foot-wide roadway with 53 feet at the property line. There'll be signage, my understanding is there'll be signage there that will say, "No right turn. We're trying to avoid any trucks going north on Old Ferry Road." That would result in trucks ending up at the intersection of Old Ferry and Vannum. So hopefully, all truck travel is going to go that route. I tried to address most of the comments. I think it's a much better situation than what exists out there now. You know, taking out 115 feet of curb cut on Petucket Boulevard and replacing that with two small curb cuts that would really regulate traffic in that area. And also the southerly curb cut on Old Ferry Road, which would be pushed up, a little further up Old Ferry Road because of the new traffic signals that are going to be going in with turn lanes on Petucket Boulevard. We're also continuing to work with the city. We're working with them on the roundabout, which is at the Old Ferry and Vannum Avenue. So hopefully, that's going to be a great addition to the, to the project. But before you tonight for basically 6.1.10 curb cuts, in my understanding, as a regulation, is basically 25 feet. So we need some relief from that. I don't think it's going to denigrate from any condition. It's pretty much industry standard for a supermarket or a shopping center to have, you know, a wide enough turn for traffic flow and for safety. So I think we've met those requirements, and hopefully, that will be the wish of the board. I'll open it up to you.
Thank you, Counselor. Like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Would you like to open up to the board? Mark?
I think this is a very efficient design, and apparently, the Fire Department, Transportation Engineer, Building Department, Planning Board, and Development Services all agree.
Correct.
So I am in full support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to ask a couple of questions, but I agree that this looks like a well-engineered plan. I just would like to hear where these curb cuts are so much bigger. I just would like to hear where these curb cuts are, so, much bigger than the 25 feet in the SMU zone. The LED light notification kind of mechanisms that you have located in these curb cuts, could you just describe that a little bit better? Because I don't quite understand what, so someone comes along and wants to go down to the river to go for a walk or a bike ride or something and they're on the sidewalk, they hit a button and can make a cross...
Yeah, my understanding that the crosswalk that's located on Old Ferry Road is a, it's a solar-powered LED beacon on a pole, so when it's activated, it's a, pretty much a strobe light flash and hopefully that creates enough attention that anybody going into the crosswalk, I mean, I don't think there's any type of lighting there, but the LED flashing signal will hopefully allow someone to cross at that location. I think that's the only place we show a crosswalk coming from what would be the west side of Old Ferry Road to the east side.
So, so there's no beacons or flashing warning systems at the actual curb cuts then for the truck traffic?
It's pretty much at the north end of what is the curb cut. You have entrance of traffic flow coming in and out at that location, so we put the crosswalk on the plan, it shows it just north, maybe 10 feet, 15 feet north, so when people are trying to cross Old Ferry, they'll have a spot that's not right in the middle of, as you would see like an intersection downtown where crosswalks are right in the intersection. This is just a little further north allowing pedestrian travel.
Okay.
Member McCarthy? I think I understand your concern and they actually, on the larger site plan, they do show a pedestrian path through the parking lot so that you wouldn't be crossing 100-foot curb cuts. So pedestrians wouldn't be negotiating with cars coming out of a 100-foot curb cut, there's actually going to be a pedestrian sidewalk connection through the JJ Boomer's through that parking lot.
Okay.
I think that's what you're asking.
You know, unfortunately I don't have a total picture here of exactly how the pedestrian access is going to work and I don't have a picture of how the whole bridge is going to be someday into 2026 or whatever year that's, so I'm just trying to understand it. But I'm assuming that the city's been working diligently with...
So during the site planner view process, our transportation engineers spent a lot of time with their engineers and the planning board actually sent this out to peer review to an objective third-party transportation engineer to review and everyone appears to be confident that it will accommodate pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicles.
It's such an important link that I just want to make sure that that's maintained and that the traffic flow allows for that to happen, so, that's pretty much all I had for comments, thank you.
Thank you. Philip?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you have any idea when you're going to be doing this construction?
Construction is commencing now, they're clearing, they're clearing the site.
Okay.
We are hoping to be completed by the end of '19, but I, realistically, I think we'll be looking at spring of 2020 for completion. We're rapidly moving forward and I haven't been to the site in a week or two, but I think they've cleared it completely and they're starting to work on it and get site preparation with regards to, you know, foundations and footings and all that in the works.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not particularly happy, you know, you're taking care of the traffic flow, which is very important anyway. Mr. Chairman, I think it's a good idea, so I don't have any concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A very well put-together project, Attorney Curtis, thank you. I have no concerns or comments. My main concern was traffic with regards to trucks, but that's obviously been alleviated and seems, the whole transportation thing has been taken care of with a peer review, so I have no...
I think it's going to work out well and if we get through the whole process of the roundabout at Bonham and Old Ferry, I think it's even going to be that much better because we're going to eliminate the need for traffic light and hopefully it works to keep traffic flowing. But a lot of improvements, I mean, I've been going by that area my whole life and been a Lowell resident my whole life and it's kind of a mishmash of how to get in and out of, you know, that parking area and having it all redone and curbing and the turn lanes and bicycle lanes, I mean, I think it's going to work out well for everybody.
I agree with you, thank you very much, I wish you the best of luck, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Certainly you answered my, my questions and concerns, but that right turn only is going to make, make sense for the neighborhood, reducing traffic. As always, well-prepared and I'm sure as this project moves forward, it'll, it'll be a much better use of the property, it'll be a better gateway to the Pawtucketville section of the city and I'm sure everyone over at Market Basket is going to ensure that this is another superb project as, as they have done throughout the New England area, so I appreciate your comments and your concerns. Any other questions from the board? Happy and Sid may have a motion, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2019-15 for variance to exceed the 25-foot curb cut requirement for SMU in several locations at the 677 and 705 Pawtucket Boulevard address.
May I have a second?
Second, second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approved.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Jimina?
Approved.
Councilor, you've been approved unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck over there to everyone involved.
Thank you.
Moving forward on the new business, ZB 2019-16 for variance Southern End Realty at 42 Highland Street, Section 5.1. The applicant is seeking variance approval for a project at 42 Highland Street. The proposal is to construct two duplexes behind the existing structure into a traditional neighborhood multi-family TMF zoning district. The applicant is converting the use of the property from a two-family dwelling to a six dwelling units and requires a variance under Section 5.1 Table of Dimensional Regulations for maximum front yard setback and the existing structure and any other relief required of Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir. Mr. Hammer, he'll be setting up.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering, 10 George Street, Lowell. We're here this evening representing Southern End Realty for the redevelopment of 42 Highland Street, which is here. This is Highland Street. For those of you who may not be familiar with this area, this is the view off of Highland to the existing single family, it was a duplex at one point, look shown here. We're here this evening requesting a variance because the existing building is, has a pre-existing non-conforming setback here off of Highland Street. The requirement is, is that the, the maximum front yard is 20 feet and we're at 31.4 feet. Our hardship for requesting this variance is that we're going to restore that existing building and that existing building is going to be converted back into the duplex that it was. In fact, all the interior renovations have all been completed, so the building on the exterior will look exactly the same, it's just the interior will be completely redone. I can walk the board through the, the development itself. The existing building's here, there's an existing paved driveway here and there's a drive that goes all the way back to the rear of the property. It's a little odd, the way that that's set up. It's a little less than an acre, there's a few outbuildings and we've done soil testing on the site. What we're proposing is to incorporate four parking spaces for the two units through the renovation of the existing structure and then the addition of two duplex buildings here that'll be facing the opposite duplex on the other side. The drive will come up to bring you access into each one of the units. And the nice thing about this layout is, is that we're able to incorporate four parking spots for each unit, which is not something we typically can do, but we're able to do that here. The project initially had to go through the Historic Commission for the design of the proposed duplexes, which are shown here in this rendering. Everyone should have packets that show this, I have extras if anyone needs any. But this would be the front of the unit here with the entrance through, through a roofed entrance here with the parking garages and then that's the front elevation with landscaping. This is the rear of the unit, may have a passive view from the sidewalk to the rear, so this was incorporated to, to look similar to what a front entrance would look like even though it's the rear of the unit. And then within the packets themselves that were submitted, these are just front, rear, and side and left elevations of the building as well as floor plans that were submitted as well. We went before the planning board for a special permit for the driveway itself. That was unanimously granted back in March and this is the last step we have for this process, is to go through the, the variance process because of that front setback. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. Like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed, like to open up to the board, Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just ask a couple of questions, but I'm, I'm very impressed with the restraint shown on this submission. It's a, it's a great way to develop a project like this and very imaginative. I thought, when I saw it, I was kind of confused, that's what I was looking at. I didn't realize that site was so long and deep like that and to develop it this way just, it's wonderful to see in that location, a development like this, it works financially and it's a big benefit, I think, for the city in that location. So the setback in that location for the street is 20 feet?
Yes, that's correct.
But it, I never thought of the houses having an odd setback and the house currently is 30 feet.
31.4, yeah.
31, right, 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 right.
So that, it's too far back from the street. The, the city's been encouraged to keep the homes a certain maximum distance from the sidewalk.
Right, to have a nice street edge.
It's nice, yeah.
Yep, and, but this house has always, I mean, this house is old, I mean, it must be 100-plus?
Oh, yes.
Right, right. Just, it's just, that struck me as an odd scenario that we're stuck with here. But what, what, and you have four parking spaces per unit?
Just for the...
The townhouses and the new...
For the ones in the rear and then the ones in the front have two for each.
Outstanding. I mean, it just seems like you've got the right green space, very nice-looking job.
Thank you.
Nicely done, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Hammer, for pointing out. I was looking at, I was to buy the property earlier today and I was looking, I thought that that driveway that you mentioned that goes on the back, I thought that was like a walkway going, like, kind of like you're taking a nature stroll back there or something with the property, but I didn't realize that was a driveway, it didn't even look like it was wide enough, but that was part of the, part of the concern was setting up a driveway and trying to get cars back in there, but it looks like everything is, you know, seems to fit in pretty neatly and, I mean, as Dennis mentioned, yeah, he did a good job in cutting it out very, very well, so it's, I mean, pretty, pretty encouraged on this one, so I wish you the absolute best of luck, thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to note that that driveway is actually conforming to the zoning ordinance.
Is it really?
Yeah, 14 feet.
As a driveway or as a like nature path?
As a two-way drive, so... Even though it's conforming at 14 feet, what we did was we tucked this parking forward a little bit, so if you're coming out and you see a car coming that's already made the turn, you can, there's room here to turn off from the drive into this area here so that you can wait for somebody to come through.
Oh, that's great, so they don't have to back up, if someone's coming, they don't have to back up, go back in and, yeah.
And then if, if you're here, then you can just simply back up.
Yeah. Great, no, perfect, thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean. Philip?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor, I know it's a, it's a very nice project. I have a question, with the dumpster issue, are you going to have separate dumpsters for each unit or is it just one?
We're going to have the plastic totes, that your traditional City of Lowell trash totes, they'll be for each unit coming out of the garage, each garage and there'll be a private pickup.
Okay, thank you.
There will not be a dumpster.
Thank you. Thank you, Philip. Mark?
The proposal itself, including the, the new construction, is, is compliant with all dimensional and parking requirements and this front yard setback thing, well, that shouldn't be an impediment to such an impressive project as this, so, I'm in favor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mark. Mr. Hammer, I appreciate your presentation as always, very informative, this, this parcel of land, as you heard from the board, and I'm sure the citizens of Lowell will agree, it's, it's, it's an extraordinary project and I think you, you did everything you could with the space, you have the landscape plan, I, I do appreciate you pointing out that, that turn there, that's, that was a, that was a question of mine, so, I like the outlay, I like, like everything about this project, so I do wish you the best. Any other comments from the board?
I got one quick question, I don't, Mr. Hammer, I don't know if you know what the, what the intent is with regards to the units, are they going to be rentals, are they condos or...
They'll be condos for sale.
Okay, just kind, just wondering, so, thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Any other comments by the board? Happy and Sid may have a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2019-16 at 42 Highland Street for a variance to reduce the maximum front yard setback from 31.4 feet to 20 feet.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approval.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Jimina?
Approved.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Approved, good luck.
Thank you.
Best of luck to the Realty over there. Thank you. Moving forward on the new business, ZB 2019-17 for a variance Luke Weatherby, 825-827 Lakeview Avenue, Section 5.1 and 6.1.11, number five. The applicant is seeking variance approval to construct the garage and extend the driveway for the existing four-family residential building at 820-827 Lakeview Avenue. The building is located in the traditional neighborhood multi-family TMF zoning district and requires variance under Section 5.1 Table of Dimensional Requirements for Use of Open Space under Section 6.1.11, number five, of having stacked parking spaces and for any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen, my name is Luke Weatherby, I live in 827 Lakeview Avenue. I actually live in this house, I'm the landlord and... I'm the landlord, and I'm constantly getting complaints from my tenants that there's never any parking. I live next to a liquor store, Crown Fried Chicken, gas station, it's very busy, and basically during the winter, it's bad. When it gets real snowy out, we have to park in the dirt. So a couple of years back, I always was planning to do this and put just paving there next to the existing garage with the bigger curb cut, and when I came to zoning, they informed me that I'd have to apply for this variance in order to do so. I'm hoping to add parking for myself and my tenants, especially while I'm living there. The proposed garage, I have two separate plans here. I don't know if you guys have both of them. One is with a proposed garage, one is for just proposed parking, added paving, and I keep my existing garage. You guys have both of them or just one?
They just have the proposed garage.
The proposed garage. So depending on if I get approved of this with the proposed garage, I also have to go in front of my wife and ask for approval to go for my new garage. So if not, if I don't make it past her, then I will just be doing the paving, and I think it'll clean up the whole yard itself, because it's an ugly yard as it is. It's just mud, and, yeah, I hope this works out.
Great, thank you, sir. Happy and said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open it up to the board. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of curious, a couple of quick questions. Mr. Weatherby, have you provided any, or have you gotten any sort of plans as to how the garage is gonna look as far as the height is and how many bay doors and...
It'd be two, it'd be two doors, two overhead doors, eight by 10, well, not by 10, eight by eight, and so that way, when I move out eventually, one day hopefully in the future, I could put a petition down the middle and just rent out each side of the garages.
Okay.
I just need more garage space because I'm a contractor, and I have so many, so much stuff, tools, equipment, and, you know, not only that, but the property management tools that I need for the actual property.
Yeah.
And my holly.
And I noticed, I think, I don't know, have you had a chance to look over the comments that were received by, did you receive the comments from Department of Planning and Development?
Yes, I have.
Have you had a chance to look them over, or do you have any...
I gave them a quick glance. Is there something you want to point out?
Well, I guess one of the concerns was the stacked parking.
So my plan would be, if I do just the paving...
Yep.
It'd be two for one unit, two for one unit. The garage would stay for property management. The parking spot would be, there'd be one parking spot in front of the garage, that would be one unit, and then there's one on the side, which is labeled number four, and that would be one unit. So it'd be, I have four units in the house, and there'd be two, two, one, one.
You would have no problems assigning each of those to a specific unit?
Oh, not at all.
Yeah, so that's one, I know that's gonna be one of the conditions that I would, no, I would recommend, no, DPD had mentioned it, and I would recommend that as well.
It would make everybody in my house happy.
Uh-huh, yeah. Generally, I probably have no problems with this. I would like to see, I probably would have liked to see a copy of what you're proposing as far as building the garage, just to see, just to see what the height is, what's going on.
The height would just be 16 feet to the mass. I think that was the standard height that we could go. I was, I actually asked her if I could put a second level on and maybe...
I think that's what the concern is, if you put a second level on, and then you're renting another, then there's another unit, you can...
It wouldn't be a rental unit, no.
Yeah, no, and that's part of, part of the thinking, I'm thinking, is looking at the proposed...
Yep.
How you're gonna propose the garage, and if you put a second unit on another level on it, and putting another unit up there, which is what we really don't probably...
Yeah, you want to steer away from that.
So maybe, can we condition this, Christine, would it be like a condition that any, you know, plans for the building of the garage have to be approved by DPD or something?
That'd be fine.
Okay, yeah, so probably a condition on that as well. Other than that, I really, yeah, I really have no other concerns. Christine, yeah, the one thing I did, we did notice in the notes, that the usable open space variance, even though it was publicized, is not an issue today, right?
He doesn't meet usable open space anyways, and he's, it is being reconfigured, but the total square footage is staying the same. So originally, we did think it was gonna change, and he was gonna increase the nonconformity, so that's why we advertised for it. Then when we got the final plan, we realized it was gonna come out in the wash, but we did want to acknowledge it with the board, because the pavement area is gonna be reconfigured.
Okay, yeah. So we don't have to deal with that. We don't need a variance for that today, right, because of that? Christine? Yeah, so, okay. That's all I, that's all I had, so just those two conditions. If you're, you'd be in agreement with that, I think, we should be able to...
So the conditions would be, I'd have...
We'll go over the conditions, but what I'm proposing is you're gonna make plans for the construction, construction plans for the garage itself, submit them to Department of Planning and Development for their review and approval, and the other one was the signing of the stacked parking to specific units.
Not a problem.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Mark?
More parking for Lowell, Senate will count me in. You know, that's something we can help you out with. Your wife, on the other hand, well, that's up to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Philip?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I know there's nobody in opposition right now, but what about your neighbors? Are they in favor of it?
About my neighbors?
Yeah.
Oh, they don't mind. They don't park, they don't park in my curb cut anyway.
Okay.
The only person that parks there is my tenant, until this is done.
Okay, all right.
He parks there every night, so...
Yeah, it's a good idea, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Philip. Dennis?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just have a couple of questions, but Christine, we're counting, the site plan that I have in front of me shows a count of four parking spaces. It's a three...
Two in the garage.
So we're counting two spaces in the garage?
In the garage.
And I thought I heard you say...
I know, it would be used as property management, one of the, one of the spaces.
Okay, so I think when we're looking at that condition, we're asking as part of that condition that the two parking spaces in the garage are assigned to the units, sorry.
Oh, okay, so the two units in the garage would have to be...
Right, so it's two spaces per unit.
Okay.
And you've got three units, so you're responsible for six off-street parking spaces.
Yep, I got you.
Okay.
All right.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear. You got a lot on this lot.
I got a what?
You got a lot on this lot.
I know, I do.
You do, yeah, and I'm impressed that you were able to maintain the green space that you previously had and still provide for those six parking spaces, so I think this is an improvement. You're creating a little more order over there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Being able to maintain it better, so I like the idea, and I wish you the best of luck with your garage.
Thank you very much.
Because every guy should have a garage.
I'll tell you right now, she's being tough about it. She's putting up a fight.
All right.
Be where you are on public records, sir.
Hopefully she don't look this up.
Thank you. I think overall, I think it's a, you know, it's a well-received petition. I think currently, anytime a resident of the city, particularly a landlord, is coming in and looking out for the benefit of their existing tenants is always a positive, and what you've done on this site, we're hoping you stay here in Lowell. You seem like a very responsible citizen, and you're doing the right thing for the neighborhood, and you're doing the right thing for your tenants, but you're also looking out for the future of the city. So if you, if you do decide at some point, move on, you know, you're leaving a positive effect on the neighborhood and the city, and I think that's a good thing, looking out for the future down the line. Once again, we can, we can help you with, what we can help you with. You'll be on your own on the other format, so... Any other comments or concerns from the board?
I just wanted to clarify with Christine, the variance that we're looking for is the FAR lot coverage, going from 41% to 46%?
No, the garage doesn't count towards lot coverage. We're doing the off-street parking requirements, and...
So it's the stacked parking?
The stacked parking and the, yeah, just the stacked parking.
Just the stacked parking, okay.
6.1.11, number five.
Thank you. Any other comments or concern? With none said, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2019-17 for 825-827 Lakeview Ave. For a variance to provide stacked parking with the following two conditions. First, that the parking be assigned per unit, so you'd have three units, you'd have all six parking spaces assigned to those three units. And the second condition is that the construction drawings reflecting the new garage, the plans be reviewed and approved by DPD.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approved with conditions.
Member Jamina.
Approved.
Mr. Weatherby, you've been approved. We wish you the best of luck with your project and your endeavor at home.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Moving on to other business, we have none. Moving on to minutes for approval, we have none. Christine, you have anything for the record?
I have some plans to pass out. Our next meeting, we've got one, two, five petitions.
Very well. Thank you. Any other comments or concerns of board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just want to go, just want to put it in record that my country of origin will be having their Independence Day this Saturday, so I just want to wish my country a happy Independence. That's a serenade.
Thank you. Thank you, Philip, and we wish you, in your country, may have a happy Independence Day. Any other comments? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion adjourned, meeting adjourned. Have a good night.
I just have a question. So we, well, we live on Raven Road as well.